Call the order for a Watertown City Council meeting for November 4th of 2024. Please rise while Jody Brinkman, the Pastoral Care Leader at Prairie Lakes Hospital Healthcare System, leads us in prayer.
Give thanks to the Lord for he is good. God's love endures forever. Psalm 136:1. As this council meets tonight, dear Lord, we thank you for all that you have bestowed upon our fine city and the surrounding area. May you continue to help in decisions that are made as we move forward, united to serve the city of Watertown, along with the communities we serve, and do what is best for the people. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Finance Officer Bob Zine, please find out if we're all here.
Okay. Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Helene?
Here.
Jerrance?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum is established. With that, the Chair will entertain a move to approve the agenda, but we have a couple different changes. We are going to pull Items B and E off of consent. That is correct, Councilman Tupper and Councilman Danforth? Okay. We will add those to the end of the agenda. We will move Item 12C to be right after 8A. So, nothing new there, but we just want to be considerate of the timing of some of the people who are in attendance, so that they can get home and cook dinner, spend time with family, all those great things. So, with those changes, Chair will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Bueller.
Any conversation on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to Item Open Forum. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? I'll close Open Forum and we'll go straight into Item 8A, A New Patrol Officer Introduction. Chief Toomey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, City Manager Mack. I thought it's my honor to introduce three of our newest officers to you guys. I thought it was important that you got to see them face to face and they got to see you and see who's representing our department out there every day and risking their lives to protect others. So, I'm just gonna hand the mic, they're just gonna say a little bit about themselves.
Thanks, sir. I'm Austin Van Overback. I've considered Watertown home most of my life. I grew up here, ran around these streets, and I love Watertown with all my heart. I left for a little while, was in the Army for about 10 years, got out of the Army, I tried some cybersecurity, realized that I did not like computers and they didn't agree with me. So, got talked into joining the police force because I miss being serviced to my country, so I figured I'd serve my community, and I've been loving it ever since.
Hello, I'm Kenan Kep. I came here from Minnesota in September, started with Watertown Police Department. I chose Watertown because it's similar to where I'm from in Minnesota. There's lakes, good hunting, stuff like that, so there's always something going on. Public safety's always been something I've considered and wanted to do, so I got the opportunity to join Watertown Police Department. It's been great, I've enjoyed every bit of it, so hope to stick around and keep serving the public.
Hi, my name is Zachary Klein. I came up here in 2019 after graduating from Canton, South Dakota. I worked with the Watertown Street Department before coming over to the Police Department on October 1st of this year. I wanted to use my degree and my education to continue to serve the public in a better way, be a first responder, and just improve our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Not one of you said anything about me, and that's disappointing. Chief Toomey, just, I would like to take this opportunity for the public that might not know how you bring in new recruits into the force, what you look for, how to make a good fit for the community.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. We definitely hold our employees at a high standard. It's a rigorous background check that we have to do. We pick the best of the best. We've been really fortunate by getting guys like these guys are. So, you go through an extensive background check, you do a mental evaluation, you do a physical evaluation, drug testing, all that. It's pretty rigorous, and then after that, they engage in about 26 weeks of training, and then they hit the streets. So, you've been here since July, right? July, September, and October. So, they're just getting their feet wet, so we're proud of them. That answer your question?
Yes, thank you so much. And gentlemen, I just want to say thank you for coming onboard. I know Chief Toomey is always, he always says to me that we have the best police force in the entire nation, and he believes that, and I think that the more people that understand that and the community that you serve and that benefits from having your service, I just want to say I appreciate it on behalf of the entire community. Just want to say thank you for providing the number one public service that we have, which is public safety. So, I'll let other people say a quick word. Councilman Tupper?
I would like to personally thank each and every one of you gentlemen for considering the city of Watertown. Watertown to me has got one of the best police departments in the state, if not, as the mayor mentioned, across the nation. It should be a privilege to you gentlemen also to know that we have your backs, put it that way, and we always will. And just thank you for taking the time out of your lives to, like I always say, and a lot of people have heard me say this more than once, is I just met three new crazy people in town because when something happens, we're running away from it and you guys are running toward it. So, thank you very much.
Council, anyone else would like to say anything? I just want to say, I know I speak on behalf of the entire council and in the entire community, thank you so much for the service that you have already provided, you will provide. All the existing officers, don't want to forget them, but thank you to everyone. Thank you. All right, following the bouncing around agenda, we will go to Item 12C, An Approval of Financial Support for Watertown Cares in the Amount of $10,000. City Manager Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. What you have in front of you is for a 2024 contribution to Watertown Cares. In 2023, the city contributed $15,000 to the organization as it was getting up and running. There is a budget request for the 2025 budget that's been included in the ordinance that you all will look at later. This is to continue to help build their organization. I'll stand by for any questions. I know Councilman Shuddy is also on the board for that and may be able to answer any more specific questions that you might have.
Councilman Shuddy, you are on the board?
Yeah.
Okay. You might need to recuse yourself from this vote. That's up to your consideration, though. That's, but I don't need to, but I know that we have guests here who would like to speak on this item. Please announce yourself and who you represent.
I'm Beth Lallum, the Executive Director of Watertown Cares, and we're just making this funding request like City Manager Mack said, to request to continue our mission, which is providing a pathway out of homelessness. I know a lot of you may already know, but we do have, the 612 Flats has eight units that house our community members that are currently homeless. Not only are we providing them a safe place to sleep, but we're also providing a temporary address, and most importantly, case management, to work with them to identify the goals that they consider that they need to get them back on their feet. It has been a great need. Just to kind of give you an idea, the flats have been full since we opened in April of 2023. We've had a waiting list consistently. The current waiting list is at 24 households, which is, that's households, not people, and that is, contains 15 children actually right now that are on our waiting list, and their waiting list has been as high as 52 households. So, this is a very great need. Since we've opened, we've serviced 64 people, which includes children in the shelter, and we've also worked with people that are on our waiting list, too, about 17 households or 24 people. We have received funding already from the county, the hospital, and the community foundation, and like it was mentioned, the previous director missed the deadline for 2024, thought maybe we'd be okay, but are just really seeing the need and requesting that money from you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lallum. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this item? All right, I'll close public testimony, open it up for Council Action. Can I get a motion to approve the support? Motion made by Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Peters. Let's open it up for conversation and questions. And Councilman Shuddy, I just want to make one thing clear. You're okay, it's your choice, but since you do not profit in any way personally, it is fine to vote on this. I misspoke earlier, I just wanted, it's just up to every councilman as far as whether or not they feel that they need to recuse themselves, and then according to the policies of the council, if some other council member feels that it is somewhat improper, then they can raise that issue, but I don't think anyone will in this case. I just wanted to clarify that, not only for tonight, but also going forward. So, Councilman Shuddy, I will give you the first question.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I want to also just to share that, you know, being on the board and also with Access Ministry that I'm in, we see a lot of need around the community over the years, and this transitional housing is what this is. Again, just to reiterate, it's not a shelter as far as, you know, like some communities have shelters that you can live in for quite some time. This is a transitional housing with resources to help people maybe come out of whatever challenge they're working through, and for, who knows if it's two, three, four months, but there's a process that we are, it's proving itself as we work, as we learn, with now with Ms. Lallum and the, as the Director, we're definitely learning and growing how to make this work better for the community. It's been quite a process in the last year and a half to kind of dial it in, but we're getting there. And getting the community support is gonna be a, last thing I want is to always have county and city and, you know, always be the ones that are funding these kinds of nonprofit organizations, but the community, if we can get more people in the community to catch the vision, individually, businesses, to help, to help this community in this area right here, this particular specific area that just, because there could be some good employers, or I mean employees, that come out of this, you know, that they could, as they get the help needed, they can get some of their lives turned around, it can help our community in so many ways. So, I just wanted to share that little bit, and I guess I'm thinking, I will recuse myself just because, just for optics, just, you know what, let's let you gentlemen, you know, make the decision on this, and I just appreciate your considering this today.
Councilman Tupper?
Councilman Shuddy and Ms. Lallum, and, excuse me, everybody that's on your board and in your organization, thank you for one thing. Do you have any kind of pulse of what the homelessness is in Watertown?
Actual numbers? You know, I don't know if we can, there's a lot of people that are, that still do not realize, you know, that we even exist. A lot of people that are not on our waiting list, a lot of people, you know, that are just, you know, couch surfing and doing different things that we are not even aware of, so I don't know, unless Sarah, you've had any?
No. I mean, it's a shame that we have to even worry about that, but it is, it is real. It's part of life, and where we live, it's even worse with winter coming on, and, yeah, it'd be nice to have a home for all of them, but I know that's not possible, but thank you guys for all your hard work. I mean, it's full all the time.
It's been full since we opened, yep.
So, and that's, what is it, six units?
Eight.
Eight units, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's definitely a hand, it's supposed to be a hand up, not a handout, and I think you guys do an excellent job of that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Jerrance?
So, the issue and it's, let's do that. So, the issues coming up, we've been working, you know, the upcoming budgets coming, and councils of the past, and this council a year ago, the question we've always asked, and the quick little litmus test is, what kind of fundraising are you doing to partner with the city money? And I know you guys do fundraising, so can you just explain to the public what you have done?
Yep. So, now that I have been able to hire a part-time case manager to help me there, and we've added some additional board members, we are actually working on a couple really big fundraisers coming up here for November and December. We've got one in the works that will be coming out, I don't want to say too much quite yet about it, but it's gonna be big. We're also looking at some matching funds from people as well, but we've got a couple big things, and a social media fundraiser, we're also going to be the local roots recipient for December, which is gonna bring a lot of awareness, and I think that once, now that I've got some other people on board to help me, I think raising awareness and being able to have the time to get out there and inform the public of who we are, I think we're gonna be raising quite a few funds in the next couple of months here.
Follow-up?
Dan, do you have anything to follow up with?
Councilman Shuddy?
My friend, Dan. Sorry.
Basically, you know, what we've done, part of this process in growing and learning has been getting the right people on the board, you know, with connections in the community, getting the right, you know, getting a good director in there, that's, you know, we had another director previously that got the ball rolling, but now taking the baton, we got, we got Ms. Lallum helping doing that, and so really, this, even for the next year, it's gonna be just getting these ducks in a row, and that's, that's, that's the hopes is that, again, as the community gets more involved, we'll see it, we'll see it really take off, so.
Any further questions or comments, Council? City Manager Mack, just a question, where will the money be coming from?
The 2024 unrestricted cash balance.
Thank you. And I would just like to make a point, I don't, I want to make perfectly clear to people because I did, there is a difference between a homeless shelter and transitional housing, and I think that that's very important for the community to know. It might be, might not be clearly defined, but there is definitely a goal with transitional housing, and that is to get people up on their feet, into jobs, into their own places where they will live and contribute to society. Not to say that anyone who's homeless can't also do that as well, but the goal of transitional housing is clearly defined as bettering those people, which in turn betters the community. It is to solve a problem, not to just solve it for a night. I think people have this misconception about homeless shelters that it's, well, it might not be a misconception, but the homeless shelter is just to provide people a place to get off the street that night. Transitional housing is very different. It's to get people in, give them whatever education, whatever tools, whatever context they need to get them back into society, to become the people that they want to be and that the community wants them to be. I always want to stress that because the goal is very clearly defined and a good one for the community and for the people. So, hearing no further questions or comments, the motion is to approve the support in the amount of $10,000 to Watertown Cares. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jerrance?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Oh, you're, yep, Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. On to Item 9A, An Approval of a Bid Award for the Petroleum Products and Street Maintenance Materials for 2025, Project Number 2427, to various contractors and suppliers at the designated pricing as outlined in the bid tabulations and summary of recommended award. We'll go to our Public Works Director, Heath Fannai.
Thank you, Mayor. This is our annual bid award for dozens of products that are used throughout the fiscal year. This pricing would be good for fiscal year 2025. Includes everything from some of the hot mix and cold mix asphalt that we as staff go pick up from the asphalt plant here in town, to other miscellaneous materials such as crushed rock or gravel, crushed concrete, pea gravel, all types of materials that we use throughout the year for maintaining our roadways or repairing some of them. Also included in here is our bid for gasoline and diesel fuel pricing for the entire city, not just the street division of Public Works, but that's applicable for the entire city fleet that we contract typically through Senex, who again is the little bid for this year as well. I would put out just a quick shameless plug for our centralized fleet maintenance program and centralized fueling and things of that nature. We receive, as you'll see on this bid award, a 10 cent per gallon reduced cost to Sioux Valley Co-op for our fuel purchases through them. that that savings will be tremendously increased, once we get to that point in the future. But until then, we're kind of at the mercy and the needs of other fueling facilities. They've got the hardware, the pumps and things in place that we do not have. So, we have been receiving that same 10 cent discount, I think for at least the last handful of years now that looks like they proposed in their bid for 2025 as well. With that, I'd stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Director. Chair would like to entertain a motion to approve the bid award. Motion made by Councilman Shetty, seconded by Councilman Peters. Let's open it up for questions and comments, council. Councilman Beeler?
Yes, I have a question for Public Works Director, Assistant Public, or Public Works Director slash Assistant City Manager. He's, yeah, it's tough. Anyway, I better turn my mic on. I notice there's nothing for cutting edge here. Do we not, how does that work and why do we not have any bids on that?
I'd have to verify with staff for sure, way, if they made phone calls, I'm sure they did, to do some exploration why we didn't receive any pricing. What we will do, though, is proceed into the new year by getting different price quotes from different suppliers. That's one of those areas where, depending on the overall dollar amount, if we've exhausted a bid process, we've got some latitude now to go and procure. And I don't believe that we purchase enough cutting edges to trigger another bid if we, you know, just because we didn't get any this time, I don't think we're stuck without cutting edges, is what I'm trying to get at. We'll, we'll get price quotes and procure those according to our procurement policies and state procurement laws here forward. Sometimes these vendors, when we put this bid out, we do not get pricing. And we just have to call and remind them that we're in need of these things and work forward with them from there.
Thank you. Counsel, any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the bid award. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Officer Bob Zine?
Okay. Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shetty?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 9B is an approval of a bid award to Mack Landscaping and Irrigation in the amount of $117,000 for the 2024 Park and Recreation Improvements Park Signs Project Number 2409A. Let's go to Assistant City Manager Von I.
Thanks again, Mayor. This is a park and rec department item, but the city engineering office helped with it, of course, as it's a construction project and a bid award, and so that's why it's being channeled through the engineering division. So, I know next to nothing about this project, other than the simple fact that we're replacing a lot of signs at the parks. I did pull up a map that shows all the locations and it's really pretty impressive. And I'll otherwise defer to Park and Rec Director Radek to discuss any more level of detail.
Well, let's go to someone who actually does know what this item is about, Director Radek.
Thanks, Heath. Thanks, Mayor, Council. Yeah, this is basically a project designed to, you know, for wayfinding purposes, provide some consistency with our sites. If you look around the community, you know, we have identification in a lot of our park areas, but it's aged. It's, you know, wood, wood style signs. The project will be landscape, you know, block pillars and aluminum style signs that can, we can keep fresh with a lot less maintenance and will look attractive and, like I said, provide consistency across the board. It is interesting, you mentioned in the last, last item, we didn't receive any bids. This is actually the second time we bid this project. The first time we bid it back roughly in the spring, we received zero bids. We decided to rebid it and receive five bids this time. So, sometimes you just never know. Any other questions?
Thank you. I'll have you stand by. There might be some. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bid award. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Questions or comments? Councilman Tupper?
Just a comment, you know, I've seen the, the design picture of these and, you know, our park and recs, or parks, excuse me, have all looked kind of the same for a long time. And it is definitely time to change them. There's a lot of them getting in bad shape. And, and I like the idea that this is going to change them all, correct?
Yes.
I like the idea that, that we're going to look uniform and make our parks look a lot more professional. And when it's time for change, it's time for change. So, thank you very much for your work on that.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilman Shetty?
Just same thing. I just appreciate your work on this. Now, there's so many things, this task, I'm sure you got to look at and what to do. But this will, this will help our parks and our community and just, I just appreciate it, so, yep.
Director Radek, we'll have the nice, pretty new city logo on it, won't we?
It certainly will.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? All right, thank you. When was the last time we did any new signs, other than on a new park?
Staff has, over time, has tried to keep the ones up. And, you know, I said, really? Let's hold on, off on that recently, but yeah, it's been a while.
I just seriously think that there's some park signs that were there when I was a kid.
You're probably, probably not far off.
I'm pretty sure the Highland Park sign, which is where I spent most of my youth, is still there. But anyway. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the bid award. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bob Zine?
Okay. Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shetty?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 9C is an approval of a change order, number one, for the 2024 Miscellaneous Drainage Project to Level Contracting LLC for an increase of roughly $10,000 for a new contract price of roughly $140,000. Director Von I?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the annual miscellaneous drainage improvement project, which means it includes a myriad of things such as concrete valley gutter, curb and gutter, storm sewer pipe, kind of more on a localized repair basis where we're making improvements in certain areas of town. This one also had to deal with some flood repair areas in town from spring of '23. And we've got FEMA footing, funding associated with this, these repairs as well. This is a final change order simply to balance out quantities on the project. And I'll stand by for any questions with City Engineer Peterson in the crowd.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the change order. Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Questions or comments? Councilman Peters?
How much FEMA money do we have for this, associated?
I believe it's just shy of $65,000 that they had awarded us. So, roughly a little less than half the project total.
Is that reimbursement? It's, you have to pay for it, then they reimburse you? Is that how that works?
I believe this one is, is already in our coffers.
All right, thanks.
Councilman Tupper?
Mr. Von I, does this still fit under the engineer's original estimate? I see Justin back there shaking his head.
He believes so.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Motion is to approve the change order. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shetty?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 9D is an approval of a change order for the 2024 Neighborhood Street Reconstruction of 12th Avenue Northwest with Dunning Incorporated for an increase of roughly $74,000 for a new contract price of $1.5 million and a decrease in contract time for a new substantial completion date of September 27th of 2024 and a final completion date of October 25th, 2024. We'll go to our Assistant City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, a final change order from this construction season, now that that project has wound down. Of course, our change orders oftentimes aren't for time, but that's one of the two reasons. You execute a change order in a contract, it's either for time or for expense. This one includes both. The additional costs are a balance of quantities throughout the entire construction phase. And then the time is just to square up the completion time, completion dates based on, sometimes at the end of a project, we'll grant weather days or things of that nature that have to be considered so not to hinder the contractor with any liquidated damages for days that are out of their control. But nonetheless, this one's pretty straightforward, but we'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the change order and a decrease in the contract time. We'll just make that official. Okay, motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Shetty. Questions or comments, council? Any questions or comments? Councilman Tupper, you had something?
Yeah. Public Works Director Von I, same question as last time, I guess. Does this fit underneath the original engineer's estimate?
I'm skimming the financial summary here to see if that is noted. And I'm not seeing the, the initial engineer's estimate in there. We can, we can look that information up.
Get back to me, yep, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? I would like to comment and give my personal thanks to Assistant City Engineer Justin Peterson and a lot of the staff upstairs in City Hall. I know we were getting a lot of calls regarding this 12th Avenue Northwest project. I know not all of them were pleasant. And I do know that a lot of time was spent working with individual homeowners about the grading of their driveway, their sidewalks, proximity, all of that stuff. And I just want to say I thank you for your customer service in regards to addressing the concerns of the homeowners along 12th Avenue. And also on a personal side note, I have to drive that road every Wednesday, so thank you for finally getting that done. So, but I do, do want to say thank you for going above and beyond to address the concerns of a lot of citizens up there. Thank you. Councilman Peters?
I'd piggyback onto that just for a moment because I had a ton of people reach out to me as well because it's in my ward. And I know for a fact that Heath, Craig and Justin both took phone calls after 5 o'clock and on the weekends for this project. So, thank you guys very much for your customer service because it helps me out. I can't engineer a road from, from my position, so thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Motion is to approve the change order and the decrease in contract time. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Helene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shetty?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 10A is the 2025 Budget Appropriations. We've got two items underneath there, an ordinance for the 2025 city budget appropriation and number two, 2025 enterprise funds budget. We will discuss them together, vote on them separate. Oh, no vote, no, just, oh, sorry. Well, it doesn't say that. All right. Officer Bob Zine?
Do you want me to jump in on this, management? Okay.
Oh, sorry.
So, yes, in front of the council is the first reading of the budget ordinance. The ordinance covers basically the, the general fund and then the special revenue funds. Enterprise funds are treated separate and ordinances are required, but still approving that budget. As far as what was presented to the council at the budget hearing by Manager Mack, there was a few changes, very, very small changes, more kind of clerical things that we found. The Wellness Center actually has a benefit. There was, equipment was in there, but it was also in the capital improvement fund. So, that one has a positive. Parks, very tiny decrease due to how we moved some of the budgeted positions. We were splitting a few people amongst four divisions and now we're kind of simplifying that, so very small change there. We did have the wrong grade on one position, which equated to $15,000 and that adjustment was made. Casualty Reserve Fund, we, Manager Mack and I did discuss. We adjusted that to actually close that fund. That's been a $15,000 budget and it was to offset anything that wasn't covered by insurance. It's kind of a, a past practice that we didn't really feel was significant. So, we increased that to essentially close that fund and we would no longer use it. And then very last thing was the capital improvement fund, increased $43,000. We had forgot a mobile equipment lift. It was part of the presentation, just not into the numbers. So, those are the only changes from the budget hearing to the ordinance. So, if there's any questions, I can answer them. Thanks.
City Manager Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. I can give some highlights from the budget presentation for those that haven't had a chance to watch it. So, we did reduce the budgeted deficit from the general fund versus previous years. We planned for a 4% increase in wages, 7% increase in health insurance. We are planning for some modest sales tax growth, about 2.1% is what has been budgeted. A .41 million dollar general fund increase from the 2024 adopted budget to the 2025 or 1.6% increase. The budget is really focused on efficiencies and organizational improvements. We approached it with a long-term financial sustainability mindset like we've talked about. And we find the 2025 budget to be very intuitively lean and streamlined. Be happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Thank you very much. I will open a public hearing, oh, sorry, excuse me, I was getting my head in myself. Open it up for council consideration. Councilman Tupper?
First off, thank you very much with not only City Manager Mack and CFO Bob Zine, but all the department heads that had, and all the staff, put it that way. I mean, everybody had to really dive into this really hard. And, and thanks for kind of maybe in your words, Ms. Mack, right sizing our budget, if that's right. But I know there had to come some sacrifices there someplace along the line. Without going, I mean, I don't, I don't need details of every little thing. And I don't want a 30,000 foot view. Is there any way of, and I'm not asking for it now, but before our next meeting, maybe a 10,000 foot view of how we got to that?
Are you asking what we cut?
Yeah.
Okay. We didn't cut anything. So, we went through and looked, so the way that I would view a cut is you can no longer provide a certain level of service or we've reduced employees. We did not do that. We went line by line through every operational budget and looked at the five-year actuals of what was spent in each budget line and right-sized it based on what was actually spent versus what had been budgeted historically. That's how we came up with the savings that we did. And I can get you a detailed list of that if you want, but for example, what we found across numerous departments was we were budgeting to be fully staffed, for example, in the wages and benefits section of the budget. But we were also in the operating side, budgeting pretty high on temporary wages and part-time salaries, assuming that we would not be fully staffed. So, essentially double budgeting in some areas. When we looked at, you know, supplies and travel and professional development, we looked at what had actually been spent over the last five years versus what had been budgeted and budgeted for 2025 based off of the actuals. There were two, if I remember right, I'm sure my, the staff will correct me if I'm wrong. There were two items that were proposed. Actually, that's not accurate. There were, there were some new FTEs proposed and that right off the bat was no new FTEs. Secondly, the police department had requested dollars for the partnership with HSA. And we originally parked that to the side because we, that was a new initiative. And then the golf course requested some new carpet. So, I did cut carpet out of the golf course. Sorry, dusty. We came back to the police department and that's where we looked into the opioid settlement dollars to see if we could utilize those to fund that initiative. So, I guess I misspoke. I did cut something. I cut the carpet. Otherwise, FTEs remained the same. All of the operating budgets are within what has been actually spent in the last five years. And that's how we were able to come up with just about 2.1 million to put into the unrestricted cash fund.
Follow-up, Councilman?
So, I know a lot of work went into, of course, we all know sales tax has been a little flat lately and then the uncertainty of, which we'll get an answer tomorrow, and I am 28. And I know you took a lot of that into consideration. I think our budget was somewhat set with- little flat lately and then the uncertainty of, which we'll get an answer tomorrow, and I am 28. And I know you took a lot of that into consideration. I think our budget was somewhat set with the fact of that passed. If that does not pass, is that going to free up anything that could possibly be done or once the budget's set, it's set?
So we did not budget taking those dollars out because if it does pass, it wouldn't go into effect until July and we would have some time to figure out, one, if our reserves could cover whatever deficit may come from that, if it does come, or look at what programs and initiatives we maybe need to modify or change. What we did do, and we'll talk about this on Tuesday at the CIP workshop, is when we look at the cap, or at the carryover dollars that will be available from the general fund into the capital fund, we do have a line item in there with I am 28 and without, as sort of a contingency built into that. Now, if it does pass and it is determined that cities can no longer collect that, the 2026 budget will look drastically different.
One more follow-up? I know that's a lot of questions, but one of the reasons I did is because that's kind of a hats off to you and the staff for putting everything together that way because we're kind of in uncharted times right now. So let's hope the election gets over with and I am 28 don't pass and things settle down a little bit and we go back to a little better sales tax revenue. So thank you, everybody that has put in their time and effort into this.
To speak to the sales tax and Councilman Durand had sent an email a couple of weeks ago about it, just so everyone is clear and CFO Bob Zine can definitely chime in here, we had a pretty in-depth conversation at our staff meeting this week. So she sends out a monthly report of where we're at with sales tax. What we should be using that report for is to really look at what's happening in that month. Okay? When we budget, we base our budget off of the actual dollars that we have received from the state. So every month, the state goes in and does some, what we call a true up or the audit. So what's reflected on the spreadsheet that Kristin sends out is accurate based off the dollars that we've gotten for the previous month. What we budget off of is what we've collected as a whole annually. And we are tracking, so 2024, we budgeted for flat revenue. So our 2025 budget is 2% growth off of the 2023 numbers, which we well exceeded our 2% projection there. You can speak better to it than I can, but the point is we feel very comfortable with the 2.1% projection.
Officer Bob Zine, anything to add?
Counsel?
Councilman Durand?
So conversations from Main Street this last week or two. I don't know if it's on the eve of an election. People are not walking into stores. I mean, it's a little quiet out there right now and I sure hope that turns around after tomorrow's results or next year's or in two weeks or whenever we know the results. But not sure if it's the election or if it's a lot of other things, but farm economy, I don't, you know. I spelled this out. This wasn't a surprise to anyone here because they had my email from last week concerned about most cities across the country are not looking at expanding sales tax revenue estimates. And even at 2%, I had my concerns. So I just don't know when you, you know, projecting, that helps me that you're projecting 2% over 2023. That makes some difference, but I see other cities in South Dakota, I don't know if they have different circumstances than us, than we do. And definitely across the country, there's pullback, but those were my concerns. I don't know if I had a question out of that or if you, if there's questions that arose out of those comments.
Any further comments or questions? All right. We'll see that at the next meeting. Item 11A is an application for a new retail malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license to the world of the party doing business at 101 North Broadway. Finance Officer Bob Zine?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, in front of the council is an application for a new retail malt beverage wine. This did pass the Board of Adjustments. There has been alcohol previously in that location, but due to it being inactive for over a year, it does require that it goes back to the Board of Adjustments. Pass, all in favor. Everything's in place from, all fees have been paid, no sit hearing, all that. So if there are any questions, I can answer them.
All right. Thank you very much. I will open a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? You don't have to. I do know that the owner, operator are in the back of the room to be able to answer questions, but don't need them to. So anyone else would like to talk at the public hearing? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for counsel action. Can I get a motion to approve the license? Motion made by Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any questions, counsel? Comments? Motion is to approve the application. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I'm looking forward to eating at your establishment. For those wondering, it's Honduran? Okay. Perfect. Thank you. I am 11B is the second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown for a portion of property in the Watertown Development addition from I-1 Light Industrial to C-3 Highway Commercial District at 1425 9th Avenue Southwest. We'll go to our Assistant City Manager Von I.
Thanks, Mayor. Second reading, so this is second and final for this rezone application that's been through the planning commission and through first reading with counsel at the last council meeting. It's a fairly straightforward rezone to square up the entire property to be zoned uniformly as a C-3 zoning district. I pulled up a map for reference. You can see the northern land of this. Due to a vacation of right away back in the late 70s that became, that created a piece of land that became part of this larger lot, but did not get platted with it or rezoned with it. We're doing a little bit of cleanup here is essentially what's going on. So it's pretty straightforward from that respect. Creates one unified zoning district throughout the entire parcel. Passed planning commission for recommendation to the council. And with that, we'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. I will open a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to testify on this item? Or online, I guess. I'll close the public hearing, open it up for counsel action. Can I get a motion to approve the amendment? Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Counsel, any comments or questions? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 12A is an approval of a resolution authorizing the conveyance of real estate property located at, within Lot 2 West Watertown Facilities, first addition to Watertown Development Company. City Attorney Carrico?
I'm the winner. Assistant City Manager was like, is that going to be you? I was like, I don't know, but I guess so. So counsel, what you have before you is a resolution to convey the land to a portion of the land out at Highway 20, which we commonly refer to as the street facility land, for the eventual purchase from the Watertown Development Company by the Hanson's. They're looking to expand Culligan Water as well as maybe do some other entrepreneurial projects on that site. One of the concerns of counsel obviously was the layout, but if you look at the last page of item B, which is the actual purchase agreement, they actually did plot out so that there's not that, what I'm going to call cockeyed, you know, straightaway. It goes straight up to Highway 20 so that it's a nice formulated piece of land that they are going to have, so we don't have to worry about access of any future parcel holders. And thank you to the WDC for assisting us with this effort. And it is, we'll be at $5 a square foot once they actually survey it and determine the final square footage. Any questions? I can certainly answer them.
Thank you. I don't need to open a public hearing, but I was wondering if there was anyone who would like to testify on this item? All right. Close the public hearing. I am going to allow some leeway to talk about either items 12A or 12B since they are very close to each other. Open it up for counsel action. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution? Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Peters. Councilman Danforth.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Carrico?
Councilman Danforth?
That's very nice. So the agenda item does not specifically state what the land area is that's being conveyed to the development company. So for record purposes, as we get into, what is it, B, which is the actual purchase agreement, the diagram or the picture that's on there, that is the piece of land that's being conveyed, no more than what is being shown in the purchase agreement, correct?
Correct. And it was estimated originally at about 115,000 square feet.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that the conveyance, technically it could be different than the purchase agreement, we're saying they're one and the same.
Correct. And when you, and just to add for counsel's record, when you approve this, you are also approving for the city manager to be able to execute an addendum once we've nailed down the exact square footage.
Any further comments or questions? Motion is to approve the resolution. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Bueller?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Durand?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. So. Item 12B is an approval of a real estate purchase agreement and corresponding exhibits for the sale of Highway 20 land to the Watertown Development Company and authorization for the city manager or her designee to execute same and any documents required to carry out the terms of the agreement. City Attorney Carrico?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just elaborating, the terms of the agreement require the actual buyers to do the survey. The cost of the survey is on them to solidify the square footage, at which time then an addendum would also be signed by the city manager as to the exact square footage that would be conveyed to WDC, who then will follow out their purchase agreement with the Hanson's. We also had a discussion this morning with some of the department heads as to how you guys would like to designate the funds. I might be using the wrong terminology, but I'll turn it over to Assistant City Manager Von I.
Yeah, the discussion was, and Kristin could carry it from here too because I'm going to not use the right term, if we could take the revenue from this land sale and put it into a reserve fund for the purposes of the street facility. And if the council thought that was agreeable, that could be part of your direction here tonight through this motion and approval of this agreement. Really what it would do then is put it in a, reserve fund's not the proper term Kristin likes to use, but that's the one I'm familiar with. But it locks it aside and earmarks it for the purposes of helping fund that street facility based on previous design efforts and commitments that we've made thus far.
Just for clarification, that is not in this motion currently, though. Correct?
It doesn't need to be in the motion. It's just a simple direction to staff. Yeah.
Okay.
Where you want it to go.
I first need a motion from counsel to approve the agreement and authorize the execution of documents. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Councilman Danforth.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Von I, your point in regards to where these funds go is exactly what we had intended when we bought the area of land that we did up there in hopes that any sale, those dollars would go back into the fund to help support that. So I know that's where our intention was and in my opinion, that's where it still should be, so.
Officer Bob Zine?
Okay. So I'm just gonna, a little bit of clarification. So when we do receive these funds, they will go into Fund 212, which was the intent. I am not allowed to necessarily hold cash without your direction. So we have restricted, which is what we say when we were talking about debt service, which that's restricted by law. But then assigned is anything that you, as a counsel, deem you want to set that cash aside for a specific purpose. So essentially, this is what you would do. If you do want it set aside for the purpose of, say, the street facility or whatever, that is, that's the time where you would tell me to assign that cash. And then when you would look at a balance sheet, you would actually see it specified that this pot of money, cash-wise, is for this specific use. I don't know if that helps, but.
City Manager Mack?
And we do have an assigned account for this project already, so it would just be adding to the existing assigned fund.
Councilman Danforth, any follow-up?
So does that take a motion or just a direction?
I would prefer a motion because an auditor will want it. It's no different than when we took in, when we closed out some of the cash we had for the ice arena and we determined that we were going to assign some of it to go towards the operations and the council made a motion to do that. And then that's what I did. And then the auditor will look that when I move cash, that it was at the direction of the council to do so, not just me doing it, so.
Can, so do you prefer from us then a separate motion or can we amend the existing topic?
I think, I'm okay with just amending this.
Just amending it to include those funds?
Just to include that be assigned.
And the proper language for that is what?
To assign any.
What is the name of the fund?
Well, it's in Fund 212. It's just to assign the cash for whatever purpose the council wants.
City Manager Mack, you said that you have a location for this already?
We do.
What it means, is it listed? Does it have a name, a number?
So normally this would go into Fund 212, but do you want to put it into Fund 505? Okay.
Okay. So Fund 505, because I would feel much more comfortable with, what I would do is I would ask for an amendment to the motion, but I'm not going to do that yet because it's improper to ask for an amendment before the council has an opportunity. So far, only one councilman has had the opportunity to discuss this topic and I don't want to automatically assume an amendment is in order until we have let other councilmen state on that. But when that time comes, if there is no objection, I will ask for an amendment to assign the funds to Fund 505. But, so I will allow a little bit of leeway, but don't. I will say, are there any, is there any further questions or comments specifically upon the item as listed, not as amended, as listed? Councilman Tupper?
So just to maybe clean it up a little bit, wouldn't it be easier to make a motion at that time when those funds come in to be put into that fund or, correct me if I'm right or wrong?
Either way, it just takes a step out, you know, because I'm not sure when we'll get the funds and then when we get them, we know where they go.
Any questions or comments? And this is hopefully just on the purchase agreement and authorization. Councilman Durand?
So are you asking for questions on what 505 is?
Okay. Does anyone have a problem with amending this right now?
I'll amend it.
I'm going to make a motion to, the language will be, we will add to the end and assigned the funds to, and assign any monies accrued to Fund 505.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. Okay. Let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor of amending it, does anyone have any questions? So basically, the selling of the land, we are going to be putting all the money that we get for selling this portion into the street facility fund. Does anyone have a question on what that motion is? Councilman Durand?
So there's strings already attached to this fund within the 212 fund for the street facility?
Yes, there's a fund that holds the bond dollars that were issued in 2021 for the street facility project.
And that's what that bond was specifically issued for, so that's why it's in there.
Any further questions or comments upon the motion, which is to amend? Councilman Tupper?
CFO Bobzine, so then, if the fund's already there in the 212 fund, and I know you just mentioned that a minute ago, why we'd put it in the 505, is that what you said? What's the big difference, other than your comfort of it being there?
No, so if you put it into 505, okay, how can I say this? 505 would not be the natural way that a sale of land would go. When we talk about Fund 505, that's considered a capital project fund for a specific use, and we have to keep whenever we do a bond, a separate fund, essentially. So, normally, any sale of land would go automatically into our capital improvement fund, Fund 212. So, if the council's direction is to take this sale and dump it into 505, I would need that direction. The first thing that we were talking about is if we kept it the same, going into Fund 212, we would just need to assign that cash. But, either way works, 505 is where the street facility project dollars are, and then, that will essentially increase that cash balance.
City Manager Mac, you have something to add?
Just to add that the value of assigning it to Councilman Danforth's point is that that was the intention when it was bought. So, and this council, future councils can say, hey, we want to take that, whatever that dollar is, and assign it to something else, you sure can, but it takes action. When it just gets dumped into the 212 fund, it's considered part of the unrestricted cash reserve and can be absorbed by other projects or other priorities. So, by taking the action, whether you're assigning the cash or you're assigning it to Fund 505, you're being intentional with what you want those dollars spent on.
Councilman Tupper?
So, Mayor, my question is, and I would, to me personally, I would feel more comfortable assigning it through the 505, because that way, we know where it's at, but is that going to take another amendment, or is it fine in that? Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? I do have one, just to be clear, because I know that we have kind of, like, at least some idea of blueprints and cost, just to be clear, that the sale of the land will be used to buy down the cost of the construction of the facility.
Right, our estimated cost right now for the facility is $15 million, so it would go towards the $15 million price tag.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify, I don't want any confusion in the future as far as, like, any sale would be used to buy up the project or anything, so. All right, thank you. We are going to vote just on the amendment. This is, the amendment is to assign any monies accrued from the sale of the land to Fund 505. Any question upon what the motion is? This is just to amend. Okay, all those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay. Bueller.
Aye.
Danforth.
Aye.
Hollein.
Aye.
Jurens.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Shuddy.
Aye.
Tupper.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Now, we are on to consideration of the amended motion, which is approval of the purchase agreement, authorization of the execution of documents, and the assignment of funds. That is how the motion is going to be reading now. Any further, no, we have that motion, we just amended it, so. And then, we had the original motion from Councilman Tupper and Danforth. So, any further comments or questions upon the motion amended? Full motion. Councilman Jurens, you had something? Nope? Counsel, anything? All right, the motion is to approve the purchase agreement, authorize the documents, and assign the funds. All those in favor will please say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay. Bueller.
Aye.
Danforth.
Aye.
Hollein.
Aye.
Jurens.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Shuddy.
Aye.
Tupper.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We are going to move back to item 7B, approval to write off uncollected ambulance accounts receivable and remit to the collection agency for the years of 2021 to 2023 in the amount of roughly $173,000. Chief Roland, do you want to kick us off on this? And please, I know council knows what this is all about, but just assume that there are people watching who do not know what this is about, and please, also take the opportunity to tout your department and all the work that you do.
Well, thank you, Mayor. So, a little history, we have used ImageTrend Bridge billing roughly eight years for the, you know, as far as getting our billing done through our paycheck reports. This company was just sold in June of this last year to EMS Marketing Consultants out of North Carolina, and we had no control over how it was sold or whatever. But, that stated, when EMS MC took over, they did not take on any of the bad debt that was with the folks from ImageTrend. And basically, in a nutshell, this is a backlog cleanup from June of '21 through September of '23. And these are accounts that, obviously, that they were notified, their account holders, that they were going to be sent to collections after 120 to 160 days, based on whatever the communication was. And, basically, what happened is, some of these accounts are repeaters, for the most part, or these were accounts that were identified as accounts that made attempts to make payments, or maybe didn't make payments, and it lasted for periods of time, or maybe their communication factor was slowed down as well. But, these are accounts that are not collectible, and the ImageTrend folks are just doing the backlog cleanup on it. I could answer any other questions if needed. And I do have my CFO friend over there, Ms. Bobzine, that would be able to help any answered questions, too.
Thank you, Chief. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the write-off and remit to the collection agency.
Come on.
Motion made by Councilman Tupper.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Bueller. Councilman Tupper?
Chief Roland, the reason I asked for that, to pull up the consent agenda, because we normally don't see two, three years at one time, and we normally don't see $173,000, so it was kind of alarming to me, although I kind of had an idea what it was, but that was my reasoning behind that, and I just thought it was well worth to the public to be able to understand how that works, so thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Just want to thank all the people at Watertown Fire Rescue for the work that you do, just always providing service, whether or not someone can pay, and that is in the city of Watertown or in the vicinity of the city of Watertown, that's also an important thing to note. So, thank you for all the work that you do on that regard, you're saving lives and...
Thank you, Mayor. Just one other thing on EMS MC, we're pretty excited, myself and the finance director over there, with this new company that's going forward. We feel that there's some amazing technology of these folks, and my EMS chief, Langerock, has already made contact with these folks and went to a two-day conference with them, learned some really wonderful things with them, and we think we are going to have a good future with these folks. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no further comments, the motion is to approve the write-off and remit to the collection agency. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bobzine?
Okay. Bueller.
Aye.
Danforth.
Aye.
Hollein.
Aye.
Jurens.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Shuddy.
Aye.
Tupper.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 7E is an approval of a professional services agreement for plane pass aircraft landing fee billing and collection services with Vector Airport Systems LLC. Either Director Von I or Airport Director, yeah, thank you, Mayor, I can tee it up and then probably defer to Ian Meriwether, our airport manager, for any specific details on this, but generally speaking, he and I have both been tasked with trying to find gain deficiencies at the airport and also make sure we're maximizing our revenues to the extent that makes sense, to the extent that are in line with the averages throughout the region at other airports. And so, this is one of the things that Ian's brought forward for our consideration. We currently have the ability to charge for what's known as landing fees at our airport, and we currently assess those costs, but only on a very limited basis, one being to our commercial flight service provider, Denver Air Connection. Through our contract with them, we collect a landing fee, as we're allowed to under our airport operations. Where, however, we're missing the boat here is not being able to collect or having not collected fees from other aircraft that would otherwise trigger that source of revenue. And these are your larger aircraft, like commercial airline, like DAC, that have to be of a certain weight before that fee can be assessed. The idea behind it is that those landing fees can be used to help supplement airport operations, particularly as it pertains to pavement maintenance rehabilitation for the runways, the taxiways, your planes of a heavier category obviously take a heavier toll on those pavements, and those funds can be used in that capacity, as an example. That's some of the logic behind the fee. What this agreement does is sets up an automated system for us to be able to track and bill and collect those fees from the appropriate aircraft that it'd be applicable to. And from that point, my knowledge begins to get very thin, and that's where I need to rely on Manager Meriwether to explain any other details, exactly how this system works, how these planes are detected and billed, and how we get the money back, but that's just the general nutshell of the program. Manager Meriwether, we'd like to hear from you.
Okay, any specific questions about how the program works, or, you know?
Is there anything that you have to add before we take a motion? Because we, in order for us to even ask questions, we have to have an official motion, but is there anything that you'd like to add before we do that?
The only thing I'd add is that the, this particular company has a 99%, or 99.6% catchment rate, so it's extremely efficient and extremely accurate. What Heath had mentioned is all accurate, but any other questions I can address later.
Thank you, Manager Meriwether. I need a motion to approve the agreement. Motion made by Councilman, was it Shuddy? And seconded by Councilman Danforth. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, Mayor, and I asked this to be taken from the consent agenda so that we could discuss this, and my biggest reason is just to understand, it wasn't clear to me in going through any of the agenda documentation as to what we've done in the past, how we've done it, and what that means to us in regards to dollars. The one thing that caught my eye was the fee nature of, at least my understanding is that it was 25% of the net, and I'm not sure what the net means, as far as what that number means, but what I'd like to understand is, what have we done in the past, and Mr. Von I has shared a little bit of that, what are those dollars been, are they included in this 25% that we'll be paying? And what do we anticipate that that 25% is going to mean to us at the end of a year in regards to cost? I'll just start there, if I can, Mayor.
Manager Meriwether?
Thank you, Councilman. I would note that we don't have, what we've been doing is charging our airline and Alpine Air, which is a cargo service that we have out at the airport. That's not going to change, because I have the ability to assign tail numbers and aircraft that'll be omitted from this process, so we already take those dollars in as revenue. Me omitting those, this is mainly for transient aircraft refueling, tech stops, sort of thing. The two main players that we already do collect revenue from, that's not going to change. I didn't want to put that into the program, and essentially, we're losing 25%.
That answers, Mr. Meriwether, that answers a lot of my questions right there and the concerns, and so I appreciate that opportunity to have that question and those answers.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Director Von I.
For my information, Ian, could you explain a little bit how this program does work as far as the automation of it and how it's set up?
Yeah, so it works off of satellite ADS-B information. It will correlate that with flight planning, so anytime that there's a plane with a flight plan filed with the FAA, you get that information back, so tail number, flight planning, and then, they also have an in-house archive of all, any aircraft over 12-5 is a known player in the airspace, so they've got, what, 85 different airport clients and some 50 million aircraft already built, so they have an extensive and robust in-house archive, and that gets, any registration with the FAA, they bill their owner or proprietor, so that's why it takes that month loading phase to kind of get all the information into them.
Any further questions, Director?
No, thank you, Mayor. Of course, that was for the public's help, too, not just my, thank you.
So, this will not be any further assessment upon any plane that Councilman Peters flies?
That is correct.
The motion is to approve the agreement. All those in favor will say aye, opposed nay. Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay. Bueller.
Aye.
Danforth.
Aye.
Hollein.
Aye.
Jurens.
Aye.
Peters.
Aye.
Shuddy.
Aye.
Tupper.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to city council member announcements and introduction of topics for future discussion. Does anyone have anything? I do have, I would like to express condolences on behalf of the entire city council and the entire city of Watertown to our street superintendent, Rob Bainen. He's just been going through a lot of hard time, and his brother passed away just recently, so wanted to let you know that our hearts and our prayers go out to you. We are all one team here, and we wish you nothing but the best, and God's condolences at this point. I would also like to take the opportunity to address something that I did at the last meeting, and I will do until the end of Christmas, and that is, everyone, we've got to go out and shop local. We've had comments earlier tonight about downtown, well, businesses, I don't even want to specify downtown, it's every business in town, and also, just, we'll just stop at that. It's very important to support your local businesses, because we expect our local businesses to support all of the other things that we do in this town. That's the donations for the things that make Watertown better, it's for kids' ball games, you know, their teams, things like that. It's extremely important to go out and shop local. I'm going to be meeting with a group of, from downtown in a couple days, coming up with ideas on how we can come up with more of an incentive to shop local between now and the end of Christmas, but it doesn't stop there. So, it doesn't start then, it doesn't stop then, so just, please, keep in mind the community that you're living in, and know that when you shop local, you support everything that is happening here. So, I just want to stress that. Any further announcements?
Just to touch base on what you just mentioned, Mayor, is, I know I've enjoyed quite a few of the hockey games lately, and if you think about shop local, this community stuck $10 million into that hockey arena, so without those local businesses that stepped up to the plate and helped us do that, we wouldn't be where we are today, and that's why it's very important to support our local businesses, so thank you very much.
Any further announcements? City Manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple quick things to report on. Monday is a holiday, it's Veterans Day, observed, so city offices will be closed, and then, Tuesday, November 12th, we have our Capital Improvement Plan workshop, starting at noon, that'll be over in the PD Community Room, so we'll make sure that there's snacks, so you don't get hungry while we're discussing the long-term plan. I would stand by for any questions you might have for me.
City Manager, I know that that meeting is open to the public, but will it have public input, or should I ask any member of the public who has something that they would like to have considered for a CIP project, to contact council ahead of time, or staff?
I think either is fine, it is a public meeting, it's really meant to be a working meeting, where we're kind of working through documents and numbers and positioning where
a wish list to a plan, and I appreciate that, because in the past, it was always just these big projects, and we wouldn't plan ahead, we wouldn't plan for them to happen, we would just put them on a list and hope that they would happen. So I thank you for that change. Any, anything else for the report? Councilman Danforth?
On that note, in a minute, correct me if I'm wrong, we are not required by law to have a CIP plan, and there is no deadline like there is our O&amp;M budget, correct? Is that correct?
We have, so the CIP is outlined in the charter. The deadline, so the 2025 CIP was included in the ordinance that you all reviewed this evening, that is required to be submitted by the end of November.
But the long-term capital planning that we, that is something that we don't necessarily have a deadline for, and is that what we'll be discussing?
The charter says once a year, yes, and that is what we'll be discussing, and there will be great and ample opportunity for the council to weigh in and provide guidance on that document. As we've talked about, you know, we've had a five-year CIP historically, for however long you've had the CIP, but to the mayor's point, what hasn't, what we haven't spent significant time on is the funding of the plan in years two, three, four, and five. And so what we plan to bring to you is not only going from a five-year to a 10-year, but looking at how you can fund those projects, not just projects, but the operating capital, if you will, in the 10-year. And then, we've talked about unrestricted cash in the general fund, we've talked about unrestricted cash in the 212. How can we start building up some cash reserves for some of these council priority projects? So the street facility, the clubhouse, 31st Street, you know, the whole list of things that you all have talked about, and start stocking some dollars away to make those a reality. Another part of the discussion on Tuesday will be around revenue, looking at options and opportunities for additional revenue to help fund those things, and prioritization of those council projects. You know, we've got a list, I'll bring it, if we're missing anything from it, you guys can add it, and then you need to tell us, you know, what the priority is, so that we know when we're doing the general fund budget, right, and we're trying to find dollars where you want those stocked away towards.
In fact, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask that, I know that this is a very small change, but it might help the thinking and the processing from the community. Let's stop calling these items CIP projects and go to CPP. I like that term that you came up with, which is council priority projects, because then it differentiates between, CIP is, you know, like, trucks, you know, the stuff that the city is going to do to do its business. CPP is going to be long-term projects, let's say, community-wide projects that are going to be special, usually one-off projects, which is very different than what, how we have been classifying CIP in the past, so maybe just that slight terminology change will also help everyone with what we're trying to accomplish here, so. All right, you done coughing? All right. Any further announcements, counts, questions? Okay, we have no reason to go into executive session. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Any conversation on that? Hearing none, the motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good night and God bless you, Watertown.